Begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Next, we have a roll call.
I'm here. Eric Bosler.
Yes.
Jerry Diesel.
Yes.
James Kirschner.
Yes.
Martha Reesinger.
Yes.
Richard Rudolph.
President.
Terrence McDaniel.
Here.
We are all here. On the meeting agenda, we have our education norms that we want to make sure to include on the agenda. I thought this month I would cover them. I won't do that every month, but at least it would make it aware to the public. The board norms revolve around one, two, three, four, five norms, I believe. Yes. Decision making, focusing on the best interests of students while ensuring their decisions are financially responsible, take into account current data, consider the impact on staff, and align with our mission of working together to create success at St. Gin R2 and beyond. Second board norm is preparation and effective use of time. Come prepared for Board of Education meetings by reading the board packets prior to the Board of Education meeting and proactively asking questions to allow time for answers to be collected or researched and then shared at the meeting. The third board norm is cohesion, speaking with one voice. After deliberation and consensus on a subject, move forward together as a collective board while supporting the decision in words and actions privately and publicly. Do not speak on behalf of the board without authorization from the board. The fourth board norm is representation. Act as an ambassador for the St. Gin R2 School District by consistently advocating for public education and staying up to date on happenings and initiatives within and around the school district. And the final board norm is behavior and interactions. Listen to understand and communicate to explain. Respect and value the diverse perspectives, opinions, and contributions of all district stakeholders, including fellow board members, students and their families, employees, patrons, and community members. Be open-minded and engage in active listening while being aware of nonverbal behaviors as well. Encourage open and honest communication on a consistent and continuous basis and nurture a spirit of harmony, cooperation, respect, and connectedness. Next, we have approval of the agenda, which I believe this evening is two motions.
Yes, and I'll apologize. It was my mistake. I accidentally put the defeesance and prepayment of a general obligation bond under unfinished business, and it should be under new business. So we just need to make that amendment, and then you would need to approve the amendment, amended agenda. So I apologize.
Well, let's fix that.
Okay.
Motion to amend the agenda of July 20, 2021 Regular Session Meeting and move Item 5A to fees and prepaid general obligation refunding bond, Series 2020, under unfinished business to Item 6B under new business.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have approval of the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda items as per.
Second. Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have approval of the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda items as per.
Second. Eric, how do you want? I got it. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and will respond when appropriate by mail or telephone at a later date. The public comment period will not exceed 15 minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once during this period, and each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. Per policy BDDH-1, public participation at board meetings, the following guidelines and procedures will be followed. In order to speak during public participation, a public comment form must be filled out and submitted to the board president. Prior to the beginning of the meeting, the public comment period will not exceed 15 minutes, and no individual will be permitted to speak more than once, and each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. I have no public comment cards, no emails.
I do not either.
Next, we have report of the superintendent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's get the right key. I do not believe there are any notes of appreciation in your board package this month, but we just keep this item on there because it's a monthly item. The next item I would like to bring your attention to, there is a letter in Board Docs with our DESI 2021 Annual Determination of the Individuals with Disability Education Act. Our, for short, we call it IDEA. This is an annual look, if you will, that DESI takes at our special education program. Over in the yellow on the left, the range of scores goes from one to four. One is the lowest score, four is the highest score. An average score of 3.33 or higher results in the determination of meets requirements. In the middle in the table, you will see all the different determination areas and St. Gin R2's scores. All of our scores this year on the determination are fours, which are the highest that you can achieve. So St. Gin R2's determination score for 2021 was a four, which is the highest that you can achieve. So I would like to thank Dr. Teresa Green, our Director of Student Services, Mrs. Jamie Drury, our Process Coordinator at the Middle School-High School, Cheryl Wolfstatter. She is our Process Coordinator at the Elementary. Janet Leclair takes care of our 504s, and all of our special education teachers and paras. They do a phenomenal job of making sure we're meeting the needs of our students. So very proud to share that information and make it public. So great job, and kudos to all of them.
Very nice.
The next item on my report is the 2021 Tax Rate Hearing. In case anyone didn't catch it, up on 2Q under the consent agenda, we are moving the August board meeting from August 17th to August 24th. I need that time to work with the county collector and the assessor to finalize the assessor's books, and I think that will be done on Monday, August 9th. So I need that extra time to finish out the calculation, work with LJ Hart and Company. They give us a little guidance as I work through that and assist me as needed. And then we have to publish the hearing in three public places. So we usually do the paper, we do the post office, we do City Hall, and then we do all of our buildings and district offices throughout the district and anywhere else that we can put it. We also put it on social media, but that is not considered a public place yet in the old standards. So just wanting everyone to be aware that that tax rate hearing will be on Tuesday, August 24th. It will start at 7:00 PM and take place prior to the regular session, and it will be in this room here, St. Gin High School commentary area. Any questions on tax rate right now? Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Bailey in just a second. She's going to do the annual communications audit. Before I do, I have one thing that I would like to share, and so it's a surprise. Mrs. Diesel, I have a letter from MSBA that outlined your 18.5 hours of training that you are required to complete as a new board member in Missouri. So this identifies all the courses that you've completed. It is a certificate of achievement. We have a press release, and I gave that to Bailey, so she's going to have to take a lovely picture of you tonight. And I have a nice pen, so there's a lot of wonderful things here to present you. Thank you for doing that training and meeting the requirements of Missouri state law. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, and I will turn it over to Bailey, so she can present her audit. Definitely. Please do.
All right. So this is actually my first department annual update. We did a presentation in this past January, but I focused that really on district efforts in and around the district's response to COVID-19. So really, you know, that was a team effort, and I didn't want that to be the Communications Department. So that really focused on this past year as a whole. So this presentation, I'm really just going to focus on everything that's kind of under my purview so that you know where we're at and where I'm hoping to go this next year. Okay. That might be a little difficult to read, but this is just a quick overview of my many hats. So district communications, obviously, that includes internal and external communications, strategic and crisis communications, public relations and marketing, community relations, district branding and style, media relations, and also social media coordination. So, and I have help from people around the district in these various areas, but those are sort of the places that I spend all of my time. A quick overview of what our internal communications look like. This year was the first year that we launched the SGR2 Family Connections, and that should be familiar to all of you. I send it to all of you. And we have two versions. We have a version for families, and we have a version for faculty and staff. This past year, it's gone out about once every other month, sometimes monthly, just depending on everything that was going on. In the SGR2 Family Connection, it really has a section that is sort of a five things you need to know. We start out with a little overview from Dr. Fleege, and then we go into, hey, what's going on around the district that you really need to know right now? So this was actually the last one we did, and it's an e-newsletter. I'm sorry if I didn't mention that. It's an e-newsletter, so it comes through email. It'll tell you, when you're signed in, it'll tell you how many people have logged on to, you know, clicked on the link to read through. And then down here is the section of things you need to know. So this is where we include committee updates, anything, vaccinations, really any sort of alerts or recognitions, good news. I always also try to put a recap of the most recent Board of Education meeting just so that people can click through and see what's going on. Fun side mention, I just want you to know, I was looking through my survey from this past spring, and there's a question for faculty and staff that asks, what do you visit the most when you visit our district website? And there's like 15 different things listed. Board of Education webpage, 10% more of the staff say that they look at that now as the percentage that said it in 2019. So two years later, we jumped 10%. I mean, it doesn't sound like a lot. It's only 13% of the faculty and staff who took the survey that said that, but still, that is a huge, that's a huge jump. So I was so, I was so excited. I was like, I'll have to tell them that. Also, so next time, we'll need to take a group photo so that when they go see the webpage, they can see all your faces. So that is our e-newsletter. Another internal communication platform is Thrill Share. It's fantastic. It's an all-in-one. I'll just show you what that looks like on the back end. Basically, Thrill Share allows us to communicate with our families and faculty and staff in a myriad of ways. If I can, no, it's just not going to. There we go. Okay. So we can do it all at once. It's nice. It'll let you do a live feed to the website. We can post to social media from here. You can put a push notification out through our app, a text message, and a voice call. And when you click on each one, you can have a different message for each, which I love because I like to tailor the size of the messages dependent upon the channel. I mean, nobody wants a six-inch-long text message, right? So this platform is great. Our principals have access to this at a building level. They utilize it as well, so we really just enjoy having this. We also have email listservs for each building that we use pretty often. We have a listserv for all employees. That's faculty and support staff. And then we have a listserv by building as well, so. And an overview of our external communications. And again, I'm sorry, they're kind of small here, but if you're logged into Board Docs, I did include this presentation. There's a link under the section for the communications audit, so you can always jump in and check it out there as well. So again, Thrill Share is listed here because we have that, those external lists as well. And then the SGR2 Family Connection, like I said, we have a version that goes to families. Again, it has that five things you need to know. And at the bottom, we try to include recent photos from all around the schools. We'll have, we'll make sure that there are enough pictures. We have enough photos from each school, basically, so that we can kind of see what's going on everywhere. And then obviously, our social media pages. We added Instagram, I'd say, a little over a year ago, and that's done well. Mostly the demographic there of the followers is students, which is really nice because they don't follow us on Facebook or Twitter. So that's really been neat, you know, seeing them like and comment on all of our posts, especially the staff recognitions. The kids actually really enjoy seeing those, and, well, I assume, they heart them quite often, so. And then the Dragons Digest. This past year, I only put out two. So these are the eight-to-12-page newsletters that go out to all district homes. And if for some reason you aren't, they're going out to all three zip codes. So if for some reason someone in the community isn't receiving that, they can always reach out to my office. Or we also have an online version. It's available at the website, so they can always check that out. And I also post them on Facebook every time we send one out. So the Dragons Digest, let's see if I can pull it up here. Most recently, they've been about 12 pages. I'm having trouble sort of fitting everything in. Typically, I like to have them in homes four times a year. This past year, we only did it twice, but in doing so, we did have a lot of fun information. So let me see if I can pull this up for you. I'm sure most of you have seen these, but this will also give you a chance to kind of see this this online platform called Canva, and I wanted to let you know about it because we have so many of our educators who are now using this platform. It's free for educators, which is really great, but you can do so much with it. For instance, I put together this 12-page document in it, but you can do like animated memes. You can do class presentations, flyers, brochures, really anything you can think of. You can upload your logos, play with different fonts. You can upload, yeah, like I said, you can upload your logos. And then you can also edit photos within this program. So it's just come such a long way. I actually did a PD session on it with our faculty and staff this past year. So it's just a really neat program. Audra Womack's eighth-grade publications class, they use it quite often to help me out with social media content, which I'll show you a little bit of that here in a little bit. But they've really mastered how to use that program, which is just so neat. You know, they're, you know, basically 13, 14 years old, and, you know, we give them our logos and explain to them a little bit about design. I go in at the beginning of the year, kind of talk to them about design and what we're looking for in quality, give them the information about certain dates coming up, and they take it and they run with it. And it's so neat to see what they, what they put together. So they've been very helpful there. This year, we also launched Board Briefs. And what that is, is it's an unofficial document that's more of just a summary of the board meetings. It's, it just adds a little bit more information. We'll use quotes, put a little bit more context around some things if we need to include documents. And then I share that with our local media the week of the board meeting, a few days after, most of the time. And then I'll also send it out in an email to all faculty and staff. And if it's around the time that we send out that e-newsletter, we'll plug it in there, too. Our SGR2 app up at the top right, that's still rolling along. Dragon Alerts right beneath that. So Dragon Alerts are the texts you can sign up with. And we had a large number of people sign up this past year when we were doing notifications during the pandemic. But if anyone does need to sign up, they can go to our, I put the link here, but of course, they can go to our website, and it's just under the parent section of our website under menu. News releases, we tried to churn as many of those out as possible this year. I actually have an idea. I think I created a Google form, so our faculty and staff have a place where they know they can go, and in that Google form, they can tell me everything that's going on. If I miss an event, they can go there, put in a little synopsis or just, you know, a few bullets of whatever happened. There's a place where they can upload video clips that they take or photos, and it'll all put it in a drive folder so that we can churn those out. Because my biggest, my biggest problem with news releases is we have so much good news at our buildings that it's hard to keep up with it and get it out in a timely way. So I figured this might help with that a little bit so that I have it in one place where I can quickly, you know, it's a little bit more formulaic. And then right under that, I included this as well. It's Bitable. So this is the program we use to create videos. And I just wanted to show it to you because it's also pretty fun, and I think there's a cheaper version for educators. But basically, this is a, I also know some of our educators use it, and kiddos use it to jump in there and create some videos. So for instance, we've done a few board videos, kindergarten registration, parents as teachers, and they have these cute little animations that really grab your attention. And every time we put something on social media, we want to have some sort of visual with it. So this has really been helpful in that respect. And that's just another one of my tools in my little communications toolbox. If you all have any questions as I'm going through this, just feel free to give me a shout. I just want to let you know sort of where I spend my time. So I help, I, well, I'm sort of a listed reporter on some committees. District committees, the calendar committee, the Dragon Advisory Team, and the Facilities Committee. The Dragon Advisory Team, we launched under Dr. Fleege, and that is a committee where we have representatives from each building, and any sort of district initiative that comes up, we can take to them and sort of discuss through that. For instance, one of the last larger things we discussed was the climate survey so that our faculty and staff had a hand and some input into those types of initiatives. Oh, and that's one of the tractors on the Drive Your Tractor to School Day. I love that day. It's so fun. And then this is just a quick little overview of initiatives, sort of annual things that I have a hand in. So most of these are run by other groups, and I'll just come in and help with the communication plan, things like the Polar Plunge, homecoming, kindergarten registration, retiree and employment recognition, Board of Education elections, the new certified staff PD. So they come in for a few days before everybody else at the beginning of the year, and I have a professional development session with them that sort of runs the gamut for district communications. It gives them a quick little overview of how to be an SGR2 ambassador. It gives them some strategies on how to communicate with families in person and virtually. So those are some things that we can kind of talk about. You know, they're new. If they're not new teachers, they're new to the district, and they might have some questions. And it's always helpful to have little tips and tricks, you know, so that's helpful. And then calendar updates each year, graduation, that's a big one, immunizations, the climate survey. The climate survey is for faculty and staff we do each year, inclement weather updates, and then parents as teacher outreach. So those are just some things that I have on my calendar to make sure that we hit each year. And then monthly, we do employee recognitions online. And the way that that works is we have some of our buildings who identify one or two people each month. And we wanted to make, we wanted to set it up to where everyone in the district would have the chance of being chosen. So what we did was we made it to our all buildings. Somebody, at least one person would be nominated from all buildings. And then we would also have a district staff member of the month. So those are located on the websites. The district staff members are listed on the district website, and we show those on Facebook and Instagram as well. And people really enjoy getting to go in and see what everybody has said about their favorite, you know, their favorite teacher, their favorite custodian. And then, I'm here. I go to the Board of Education meetings, website updates as needed, new baby gifts. So Kenny Rap has been great. So basically, what we do, anytime we have a faculty or staff member who has a new baby, they get a little baby onesie that says Dragon in Training, and it's got the SG logo on it. We ask that, once the, you know, the kiddo is big enough to fit in said onesie, they take a photo, send it to me, and then I send it over to Kenny Rap, who like laser engraves onto, he was doing it onto little bits, like little pieces of wood, and it was so neat. But now he's actually moving on to Plexi Class, and it looks so great. So it is just such a neat thing, and every, and then we surprise them in their classrooms or in their work area with them, so. So that's pretty cool. And then also, I've got my little editorial calendar here. And I kind of already mentioned this a little bit. I know it's hard to see, but just so that you know what it is, because I do, like I said, I really want to give those SGMS kiddos a shout out. I created an editorial calendar for any sort of communication that we'd send throughout the year that I can foresee. So any holidays, dates we're off school, and then the ways in which we share them. And I've got a little code, but basically, there's our different social media feeds. If it's a website, if we're going to share it on the COVID-19 page, and it goes to the right quite a bit. But what Mrs. Womack does at the beginning of the year is I roll all of this over, add anything we need. She'll go in, she'll look at everything and decide which things can be prompts for her kiddos, and then they'll go in, put, you know, put their finishing touches on everything, create all of these designs. And then we actually go ahead and share those designs on our social media feeds, and it's worked out so great. Here's a couple of examples of things that they put together. We did, they wanted to do a motivational Monday, which at the time this past year, when they wanted to do it, was really needed. And some of the things they put together were just so great. They put in, so for instance, there's a Teddy Roosevelt quote. But I have to say, one of my favorites, this Easter break, I know it's hard to see, but the dragon logo has Easter bunny ears on it. And it's just the little things that kids think of that, you know, I just love that. It's like, yes, I never would have thought to do that. And just a quick overview of my goals. So when I came here in March of 2019, I started a communication audit. And then over the summer, using all of that information that I gathered, I put together four goals for my department. The first one being transparent, proactive, systematic communications. I know that's a lot, but that's what I want to strive for, making sure that we just focus on telling our story first, sort of showing and not just telling, supporting and empowering our faculty and staff in representing our district. There were some things that I really wanted to work on and be able to support, you know, give them things that supports. You know, when they field questions, it's a small community. When they have questions or, you know, in places where they feel like they might be unsure about how to represent in certain situations. And then continue to build trust and strengthen the relationship with our families and community. So these were the things I wanted to work on. And I had specific strategies all together, and I was so excited, and then this happened. And everybody in my position at a school district was doing this for a little bit, you know, and it was interesting, but.
Even for the entire conference.
That's right. Yeah, so also, I just, I have to throw a little jiff in there somewhere. So this is what actually ended up happening during the 2020-2021 school year. I didn't get to everything on my list, but what we did get to happen. So we put together COVID-19 communications and resource platforms. I'm not going to go over all of that because we did it in January. But if you're online on Board Docs and you're following along, you can click on that, and it'll take you to the previous presentation we did in January, just in case you need to reference that for anything. I just wanted it in here. So there is that. And then, let's see here, launching the SGR2 Family Connection. I already talked about that. Launching Board News, we talked about that. We created social media guidelines for faculty and staff. We haven't shared those yet. We're just now putting the finishing touches on them, but that's part of the goal about empowering faculty and staff because I think an online presence is something that we have to be so mindful of. And I think this is going to be a great tool for those who really want to, you know, delve in and figure it out. And this is also, this also includes guidelines for, you know, any sort of team or extracurricular that starts a district, an official district account, so that that way we can have a process involved, and we know what's going on, and it all just is really cohesive. And I think, let's see here, yeah, I think I have another slide to show you that. We also began building awareness of the facilities' long-range planning work, and that's been through the last several communications. We always, so the Dragons Digest, the SGR2 e-newsletter, we'll put an update each time we share something about that facility's work. And then we also have cameras on our buses. They finished installation this last weekend, so we'll have some photos. But we're excited to have that, and so that's been, that's been a project we've been working on. We also, I also began updating the website. When I first came here, like I mentioned, we had that audit. It included a website audit, and my, like, the areas that I wanted to focus on was wayfinding and including some department pages. We're halfway there. We'll get it done this year. So that's, that's something we started. In the midst of that, we did a complete website revamp. So if you've been on the website lately, you'll see it. It's got a new look and feel. So Nancy and I were working with Aptigee to get that done. We really think it worked out great. And then we did get the two Dragons Digest. So this is kind of an overview of this past year. This is just a two-page spread that kind of shows what we shared about facilities planning. This is the middle spread of the last Dragons Digest we sent out. So if anybody, you know, hasn't, didn't receive this, they can always get online, check it out. It's got a lot of good information. This is just a quick snapshot of what those social media guidelines look like that I mentioned for faculty and staff. This is just a quick snapshot of what those social media guidelines look like that I mentioned for faculty and staff. It also has like a sort of like decision tree about when to respond online, because that's, we get those questions a lot. It's, you know, hey, I saw this, and as an employee, can I respond? Should I respond? How should I respond? So this is going to be a little helpful when those pop up. And then I kind of already mentioned the survey when I got excited and talked to you about the Board of Education webpage. But in 2019, spring of 2019, we did a communications audit survey. And then in the spring of 2021, this April, we did a follow-up to that. We used some of the same questions, just to see where we were after that amount of time. The faculty and staff, we had 176 total responses out of about 275 employees. So actually, that's a statistically significant number, which was exciting. Ninety-two percent completion rate, so thank you to our faculty and staff. Families, we had over 400, 440 total responses, 73% completion rate, which is also still very high. So that was neat to see. This was one of the bigger questions that I really wanted answered, kind of the reason that we made this a priority to get out this spring. But we wanted to know how families felt, how informed they felt about the district's response to COVID-19. We wanted to know, thinking back on district communications this past year, how informed do you feel? And it came out, I was excited. Because if you take the extremely well-informed, fairly well-informed, and adequately informed, we're at about 91%. You know, and I think that shows that our community is reading what we're sharing with them and that they think it's transparent information and sharing what we know when we can. So I just wanted you all to know that, because, you know, the decisions made here, when we share that with our families, they're appreciative of how open and communicative we've been as a district. The strengths that have popped up out of the survey responses, transparency and responsiveness. So a large majority agree that they trust the district to be transparent when sharing information with families, including that the district has a positive or proactive approach to communicating. So those percentages actually went up since the 2019 survey. Website progress, most agree that it's easy to navigate, and they also agree that it captures the character of our school district. So that's good. And then readership, more faculty and staff and families indicate that they are reading the Dragon's Digest than they had previously. It's still at about 40%, but I have high hopes, and we'll work on that this next year. And then about 76% of families say that they sometimes, usually, or always read the SGR2 Family Connection. So that is a very high number for an E-newsletter. So I'm very excited about that. And then areas of focus for '21-'22. Overall, mindfulness, I want to continue to like sort of return to my department plan and pick up some of those things that had to be on the back burner for a little while. So that's continuing to gauge progress with those goals that we'd mentioned earlier and updating our strategies through sort of the feedback we're getting through these surveys. Continued support for the district's response to COVID-19. Just continuing to proactively communicate when possible and make sure that we're doing that in a comprehensive manner, using all of our communication channels. Because, you know, there are so many ways to get that information. We want to make sure that we have it out everywhere. Facilities communication plan, building supports. Both surveys indicated that respondents wanted to learn more about facilities planning. So there was a question that says, what do you want to learn more about? And I have a list of about 15 things. And both groups, families and faculty and staff, facilities planning was in their top five. So we would be doing this anyway, but it's also nice to know that as we're sharing this information, they want to be reading it. So they're going to be looking for it. So I think that's exciting for all of that buy-in to that information. And then completing the website updates. So that includes finishing up some department pages, things like food service, areas that we know our families can go to get that sort of information in a little easier, basically, and creating sort of a one-stop-shop page for faculty and staff. We have a faculty and staff area where we have several links for them, but putting that on a page and adding a few more things there for their purview, having it in one place might help a bit there, too. Yeah, so I'm excited to see everybody in August. I know, I had to add another, I had to add another kermit. Did anybody have any questions for me? I appreciate that. It's easy when you have support from... Thank you. I appreciate that. I do. I love being here.
Thanks for all you do, Bailey.
Thank you, guys.
The last thing I wanted to talk about under the Principal's Report, because it's actually on the agenda. I just want to take a minute to recognize Bethany Beckett. We all know what transpired, and that we unfortunately lost her this summer. She truly was a bright, a bright star among a bunch of dull people sometimes. I can remember her as a middle school student. We were chatting about something, and I was more worried about it than she was. And she grabbed my hands, and she pulled me down, because, you know, she was a little bit shorter than I was. And she said, you've got to chill out. It will be okay, and we'll move forward, and it will be great. And I said, okay, I trust you. And I just very vividly remember her saying, telling me, chill out, it'll be okay. And that was kind of, I think, her take on life. Be the bright star, take care of everyone around you, because everyone is worth great value. She will be greatly missed, but she truly has had a positive impact on a lot of people. And I just want to thank Terri, Jerry, her sisters, her family for sharing her with us. We were very fortunate to have her here at St. Jen.
Thank you.
Yes, and that concludes my report.
Can that machine be unplugged? Thank you, sir. Can I add to your comment?
Please do.
I typed it. Don't think it's like antiseptic. I just need to read it so that I don't, so that I, yeah. So I just, Bethany was a brand-new-to-formal teaching, but certainly had years of experience teaching others how to be positive, how to be kind and inclusive, and how to enjoy life, whether you were six years old or 60. She really loved old people. So I think she started to put me in that category here lately. So I'm going to be 50 soon, so I guess I'm old. I don't know. I told her, anytime she would say, you're getting old, Dave, she actually called me Taco Dave, but I'd say, I'm just getting older, Bethany, just older. We've lost several members of our St. Jen family this past year, and some of them have had many years of experience and made a huge impact on our school and our community. Though Ms. Beckett did not have years and years of experience teaching here at St. Jen, she grew up here in our hallways, graduated in 2016, and was very excited to come back and teach here. And certainly, without a doubt, played a role in showing many of us and teaching many of us, including her first graders, the value of positivity, laughter, and kindness. I'm sorry. She'll be missed by many of us, but has certainly left a legacy of wonderful memories throughout our community. Please keep Ms. Beckett's family and friends, Terri, Jerry, Bree, and Brittany, in your thoughts and prayers. Sorry, I struggled. Thank you.
So I'll go ahead and move on.
Please do.
Unfinished business, there is not any business on the agenda, but I thought I would go ahead and give you an update, because I was supposed to bring you the adult prices for '21-'22 this month. Mrs. Lori Roth takes care of that. She is our assistant in food service and does all those calculations. She came and let, she let me know that there is a calculation tool we use to determine those prices. That has not been published yet, so we are still waiting on that to be published. I believe she and Jordan Mueller, our food service coordinator, have training in the next few weeks. They're hoping that they'll have more information on when that calculation tool will be published. But she told me that the best guess right now is that we will bring that information to you sometime this fall. So I don't know if that means August, September, or October, but we will get it to you as soon as we get it. Okay?
All right. Thank you. Next, we have new business. First is, we amended this, right? So first is the addition of kindergarten teacher at St. Jen Elementary.
I thought this was appropriate, you know, Christmas is not that far away, right? All right. So do you want me to turn it over to you? All right.
So I'm here tonight to propose that we add an additional kindergarten at St. Genevieve Elementary for the upcoming school year. When I sent the proposal to you, we were at 90 registered students. I think we've since added two more, because Dr. Fleege has granted permission for them to transfer to St. Genevieve Elementary. If you look on the proposal that I sent you, it says that 74 students were screened, but 90 are registered, and that number is now 92. That means that Mrs. Cutting, our early childhood coordinator, she has formed great partnerships with our local preschools, the Head Start, the PAT. And so she did some phone calls and just went around saying, I believe there are more students. I believe there are more students. So she was able to make contact with those families and get those additional 16 students registered. She's hoping that she did a fantastic job, and we do not have this giant number of students still sitting out there. But she's worked very closely with me on this proposal. And if you notice, last school year, we had 72 phone screenings because of COVID. And then she did the same thing, and we registered 81. But yet, when school started, we were up to 94. So there were an additional 13 students that were unaccounted for. They either moved into the area, or they didn't attend any of our local structured preschools or Head Start. They might have been in in-home daycares, or maybe just not attended any structured school at all. So what we're worried about is if that trend holds, if you look from the data from 2012 to last school year, we range anywhere from adding four students to 21. When you take that average, it comes out to 15. If you take that four out of there, which is kind of the outlier, then the average goes up to 16. So with that being said, we could potentially end up with 107 or 108 kindergarteners putting 21 to 22 students in each of our current five kindergartens. Dussey, they set a desirable standard, and I believe their desirable standard for kindergarten through second grade is 17. So at this present moment, if we do not add a kindergarten, we are already above that. We're at 18 to 19 in the classroom, with the potential of adding quite a few more. So I would like to propose that we go ahead and add them sooner rather than later. That way, even if we don't get one additional student, our class sizes are still at 16. That is a very solid number for kindergarten. But by doing this now, it allows the teachers to get the class lists and call the parents. Right now, we have not notified students who their teachers are, because we didn't want to have to break anyone's hearts in August and tell them, no, you had Mrs. So-and-so, but we're moving you to a different classroom. And, you know, there are materials and things that need to be ordered as well if we're adding another kindergarten. So that is my proposal, just because the kindergarten years, that's the foundation for everything that starts. And the more individual contact we can have with those students, the better foundation that we can create. Any questions?
Nope.
Actually, I do have a question. Where do you kind of are thinking you might put the new room?
So we have the, it was the Bloomsdale Overflow Art Music Room. I've already talked to those teachers that travel in from Bloomsdale and told them, should we add a kindergarten classroom, they will have to be on a cart. And while that is not ideal, they understand the importance of that classroom, and they are willing to give that classroom up. So we have a space.
One space.
One space. One space.
We could use more.
Thank you.
I motion to, I motion to approve the addition of a kindergarten teacher at St. Jen Elementary for the 2021-2022 school year.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have defees and prepaid general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2020.
Yes, we have Courtney Wegman here from LJ Hart and Company. So I'm going to turn it over to Courtney, because she's the expert.
Thanks for having me again. I feel like I'm becoming a regular at Audubon's. I go to every time I come to St. Jen. So about a week and a half ago, Larry Hart and Dr. Lindsay and I met with Dr. Fleege and Dr. Taylor to talk about the Form C for this upcoming year, as well as some potential planning to coincide with the facilities planning meetings that have occurred thus far in 2021. As you were looking at the Form C, and everyone should have a PFA book. If you can turn to page two, I'm going to focus on that, and then I will talk about the pink papers. But on an annual basis, as Dr. Fleege had alluded to, the district sets the operating levy as well as the debt service fund levy. The debt service fund levy is governed by the Form C calculation, which is on page two. It takes into account the assessed valuation, as well as the next two years' payments that the district has to make on your general obligation bonds. Compares that to your existing balances that you have in your debt service fund, as well as anticipated revenue that's going to be derived from your debt service fund levy. Currently, the district has the 44 cent per $100 of assessed valuation debt service fund levy. And in order to maintain that, we're proposing that the board approve a prepayment and defeasance of $2.1 million of your Series 2020 refunding bonds. This will allow the district to maintain that 44 cent levy. With regard to, when you say defeasance, I know when I first started, it's like, what does that mean? It's essentially just a small advance refunding. So instead of the district just saying, yes, we're going to do a prepayment, because the 2020 bonds are not callable, they cannot be prepaid until 2025. If it was '23 or '22, it's just a regular prepayment. You're actually approving to prepay them by purchasing an escrow account in order to set aside that $2.1 million to then pay them on March 1st of '25. It's just an extra step with regard to, well, what does the board have to do? Do we have to come back and set something else? Nope. With regard to approving it, then come next year around the April-May timeframe, once all of the tax dollars have come in and we're looking at the debt service fund balances, that's when the actual escrow account is purchased. I'm the one that does that. So by approving it and then having conversations with Dr. Fleege and Dr. Taylor and looking at the balances, we go from there on actually purchasing that escrow account. This just gives the authorization to keep that 44 cent debt service fund levy. The pink paper is the actual document that would be approved. It's similar to a lot of the other legal documents, whatever the board has done, either just a new money general obligation bond or a refunding. So we have the minutes on pages one and two. And then page three just details that actual defeasance and approving it. And then pages four, six, seven, eight. Pages four through 10 is the actual escrow trust agreement. There are blanks in there, I'm sure you'll notice, because when we purchase the escrow account, we're purchasing slugs, which are, that's a terrible name. account, we're purchasing slugs, which are, that's a terrible name, state and local government securities. Because you are limited on what you can earn off those government securities, it's a safe investment. On the day that you purchase it, that's when you're actually locking in those smaller interest rates in order to set up that escrow account. So once we have the actual dollar amount of purchasing it, that's when those blanks actually get filled in. And then logistically, once the escrow account is purchased, there's a settlement date. And having communication with Dr. Flick again, it's letting you know that the district would need to wire that $2.1 million to UMB Bank on this day in order to purchase that escrow account. Now, who wants to repeat back all of this to me? So it's actually, instead of just getting an invoice come March 1st of 2025, when these bonds are callable, to then pay that $2.1 million when you purchase that escrow account, you're just setting it aside from April-May timeframe of '22 until March 1st of '25. So you're, the interest rate isn't changing on what you're paying, you're just the, the interest earnings that you have. So instead of having that $2.1 million in your debt service fund earning, let's say, a quarter of a percent, maybe a half a percent, you might only be earning maybe 10 basis points. So you're not earning nearly as much on that, but it's, that's the justification for telling the Missouri State Auditor, this is why we're keeping that 44 cent debt service fund levy.
Courtney, if, if for some reason, the, the taxes aren't there, the payment doesn't have to be made in March or April.
Correct. Correct. That's why, especially with the defeasances, I, before I do any purchasing, I'm, I'm in communication with the district on, what are the balances that you had? How to, and then, like I said, I wait until the end of the year when your tax collections, for the most part, you're not going to get any local taxes come April or May, or at least that's not been my experience, you know, December, January, maybe February. So at that point, you know where the district has ended up in debt service to then decide, do we need to move forward? If for whatever reason, if the cash flow is not there from taxes, at that point, then you need to have a conversation on, does the board need to rescind the defeasance because you're not going to be moving forward with it?
Any other questions?
And I did leave, assuming you approve it, I did leave three copies of execution versions with Dr. Taylor. Because I'm not actually purchasing this until next year, there's no rush on getting those back to me, but I did leave those for you.
Thank you.
I want to propose to include the provision of establishing an escrow account for you guys. In Kansas City, Missouri, to face the debate, 200,000 principal and average junior officials between the on-series committee can authorize the district to enter into an escrow agreement.
Second motion?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a motion to go to executive session.
that the Board of Education adjourn to a closed meeting with a closed record and a closed vote after a short meeting, short break, for purposes of discussing and following upon the following items of business. Hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting a particular employees, and scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identified individuals. Since, oh. Let's see, hang on. Who made, made the motion? Any made second there? Okay. Roll call. David Boba?
Yes.
Eric Bowler?
Yes.
Gerald Diesel?
Yes.
Jim Kirschner?
Yes.
Arthur Reesinger?
Richard Rudolph?
Yes.
Terrence McDaniel?
Yes.
Summer Reese?
Seven oh.